All right, the meeting will come to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Riverside District 96 Board of Education. It is June 20th, 7:00 PM. Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Barsadi?
President.
Mr. Hunt?
Here.
Ms. Kleiber?
Here.
Mr. Marhol?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Regan?
President.
Thanks, Margie. At this time, is there any public comment? If there's no public comment at this point, does the board have any changes or proposed changes to the agenda? If not, then we move on to a public hearing at this point. Is there a motion to approve the resolution to hold a public hearing on the resolution to waive limitation of administrative cost?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? If not, Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. So this is an opportunity for the public to ask questions about the resolution to waive limitation of administrative costs as previously explained by Rob Holmes, Director of Finance and Operations at the last meeting. So does anyone on the board have any comments or questions about this topic? I do have a question about it, but maybe we can get to that when we get to the actual resolution in the meeting. So at this point, is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing since there are no comments from the public?
So moved.
Second.
Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Then we move right into the superintendent's report. Martha?
Sure. I wanted to provide everybody with an update on just our enrollment here as of June 20th. Actually, the kindergarten enrollment is as of June 11th. And the June summer you have is the end of the year data about enrollment. But I just wanted to sort of remind everybody that our policy says that by June 30th, we will make specific school assignments for all newly enrolled and all kindergarten students. So we'll be working with the new assignment algorithm, planning to actually do it this Friday based on all our available data as kind of a preliminary look. So I think based on the numbers that you all have in front of you, we know it looks like to be a relatively large kindergarten group, that we will look at the assignment algorithm with the possibility of both two sections at Blithe, which could then mean perhaps only two sections at Central, or the other way around with three sections at Central and still with one at Blithe. So I think from conversations we've had in previous meetings, I think there would be a way through just maybe like art and music sharing a room in future years. We know that for the 18, 19 school year, if we were to put two sections at Blithe, we would have space. We just know that we would need to have space to keep them then all through their elementary years with us. So looking at that, I think there's a way we could do it. We'd be a little tighter than we are right now, but that there's a possibility and then perhaps in the long-range facilities, as we know, we continue to think about other other modifications that could be made at Blithe. So I don't know if anybody had discussion or ideas or comments they want to share on that. I just wanted to let, kind of as a reminder, let everyone know that we're drawing close to our timeline here where we'll be making assignments. Also wanted to just keep everybody updated on our facilities advisory work. So we had a meeting on, last meeting on June 14th, reviewed some of the work of the Ames Visioning Committee, had more conversation about a site visit we had done in Schiller Park. And then really the committee, the facilities advisory committee is really working to stay very committed to all of the other long-range facilities, ideas and topics that are in the long-range plan. And tonight you'll see, hear about MOU from DLA regarding outdoor space play and front entrance reconfiguration possibilities. And also just reminding people that the Ames Visioning Committee along with the facilities advisory committee are meeting on June 26th as a preliminary look at some of the concept design ideas that DLA will be coming forward with. With the idea being that those will all then come to or be sort of tweaked, perhaps refined or revised coming to the July 18th board meeting as our agreement is in place for that. Any sort of other comments or questions about that? And then I also summarized for the board, we met at our June committee, the whole meeting. We really had a, I think, really robust and helpful, I know, conversation to me, I think, you know, informative for each other, everybody on the board and myself included. What I did here is just summarize the priorities that were shared through our discussion at that meeting. And again, I think, no surprise that obviously the board's focus continues to be on, you know, high-quality achievement and student learning opportunities as well as the facilities' construction space and overall safety for our students and doing all of that in a way that's fiscally appropriate and really, you know, careful stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. So that was a really good discussion and wanted to summarize all of that for the full board to have. And then the one other item I have in my superintendent's report is a preview, an update on NWA map data. So one of the things we had talked about was how we could do more periodic updates on student achievement and what's going on in terms of student learning. I know that's why we're all here. And Merrill has done sort of in the fall, you know, not sort of in the fall, in the fall, Merrill has done an update and really incorporated park data, map data, perhaps five essentials, all the available data. It's a lot for everyone to digest at any one point in time, but we thought it might be helpful here at the end of this school year to kind of take a sort of a brief time to reflect on map data. I know it's something Merrill does very regularly as she does with her, with teams of teachers and with our principals. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Merrill for an update.
So Martha did a good job of previewing the fact that in the fall, we do the annual update comprehensively triangulating all of our data. And so as we update along the way, it's great to look at an individual assessment, but it'll remind us that it's an individual assessment, so it doesn't tell our whole story. It tells part of our story, but a really important part. So this is end-of-the-year data from this year. And this is hard to see, obviously, in slide format, so you have it in your packet blown up in an actual bigger version. But this first chart, we're going to start with mathematics and look at that data at a big bird's eye view of it from 17, through the 17, 18 school year. I look at the map data in two ways with the teachers in the district. We look at fall to spring because that's the instructional year. So the teachers like to look at that because they feel that's a reflection of the year that they're working with those students in their classrooms. We're always cautious because the fall RIT score may not be where the students ended the year or the year before. So we do also look spring to spring, which I'll talk about in a minute for that long-range view of student learning. But the goal is on this data, the diamond represents the projected growth with, if you slice the diamond in half horizontally, that would be where you would be meeting expected growth. So anytime the blue bar goes beyond that middle of the diamond, you are exceeding what the projection was within that timeframe of fall to spring. Just a couple of things I want to point out on this chart. The second column in the spring 2018 where it says mean RIT, it has SD for standard deviation and percentile ranking, those are the status percentiles. So that's where we rank out in comparison nationally for our average score at a grade level. So just as an example, the third graders have an average score of 211 in the spring, which is at the 91st percentile nationally. The reason I point that out is because we are very high on the high end, both in the fall and the spring, with our average scores. And whenever you're that high, it's really important that your core curriculum is at a high level of rigor to be able to get growth. It's really hard when you start high to achieve growth versus when you're in more of a typical range. So we always are at the high end typically. Then the next column I wanted to just speak to was under school norms for growth evaluated. So it would be the fourth column over from the left where it says school norms. And where it says school conditional growth percentile, that is the ranking that we achieved based on growth. So again, if you are the 50th percentile, that's what's expected. That's where you met the conditional growth expectation. Anything above the 50th percentile is considered better growth, and anything above the 75th percentile is considered incredibly high achieving in the top quartile for growth. So from fall to spring, you see, you'll see some unevenness in a couple of grade levels, but overall, pretty strong performance from fall to spring. And then in the very last column, the statistic that a lot of the teachers focus on is that percent of the students that met their projection. So that's the third column of numbers in that last box. And again, 50th percentile is on average where NWA projects schools to be, about half the students meet that growth head-on or more. When you're at the 60th to 70th percentile, you're performing pretty healthy. When you get to the 70th and percentile above, that's where you want to aim for. That's that highest level of growth. And so again, I don't know how many of you recall, three years ago when I started, we were not in that range in terms of growth percentile rankings. Our status was great, but our growth was far lower for those of you that were on the board at that time. And I had said, and I'll never forget, someone said, "Don't you setting very lofty goals to reach towards that 70th and 75th percentile?" I said, "They're lofty, but over time, I think we can get there." And we're starting to see that appear, so that's good. So that's the math chart. And then what I did was I graphed the fall to spring based on the cohort. So these lines are the current 2018 dot or diamond is the current grade level. And then if you go back, that's that same group of kids from 2015 to 2018 and where their data points have been. And so what I wanted to point out on here is we see data points above the 60th percentile in terms of that ranking, which is great to see. We didn't see that before. So this year's dots are moving us up. We've seen it a couple of times in the past, but not as consistently as we're going to start to see it, which is exciting. And overall, for this year, fall to spring, we saw a lot of improvement. Still have work to do. It's never perfect. You know, that sixth grade dip in fall to spring is more exaggerated in spring to spring, and I'll explain more in a second why that happens. But this cohort of kids dropped a little bit in just, you know, what they look like in growth. So that transition to middle school is still something we need to focus on to be aware that we're seeing that dip when they transition. This is math spring to spring, same concept with the boxes and the diamonds. The sixth grade dip, that's a change in format on the assessment and then not a strong recalibration based on norms. So the sixth grade norms drop nationally across the board, and we always see a significant drop. So when you see the line graph, and I'll come back to the bar in a second, and you see those three low dots, 2016, 2017, 2018, for each of those cohorts, that's sixth grade each time. So it's a typical pattern that we see, and it's a typical pattern seen nationally. So it's kind of hard to look spring to spring with the change in test. The norms aren't recalibrated well to reflect that. So just so you see that. But again, spring to spring for mathematics. I'm really excited to see the growth that we're starting to see. Again, core, that school growth percentile that I talked about, conditional growth percentile, all except that sixth grade score are above that 60th percentile. So that this year is nice to see in terms of, we've had our third year of implementation with Math in Focus, starting from the pilot year. So two full years, a full implementation, an extra year in the pilot classrooms, and Carnegie now, and its fourth year after the pilot year. So finishing its fourth year. So that's really super exciting because you're going to see at the middle school that those results are starting to hold true. And so if we look at those jumps in seventh and eighth grade, that's what we hope to see in the future. Again, that sixth grade dip, as I mentioned, has been typical. In reading, you're going to see less consistency, and that doesn't shock me. We're still only in year one of implementation with our new core in reading and elementary. And middle, you'll see stronger scores, but they fully piloted across all classrooms, their ELA curriculum. And so they actually were in year two of implementation. So we saw some stronger performance at the middle school, especially in grades seven and eight, where every single student has touched that curriculum for two full years. Sixth grade, we had partial. So I was excited to see seventh and eighth grade starting to demonstrate stronger performance in that area. I would suspect you always see an implementation dip. And one of the things that I was saying earlier is when, to Dr. Miller, is that when you implement a new curriculum, you get a little bit overwhelmed with what, all the new resources that you have and to make sense out of the resources and what you're trying to use to instruct students. So with MAP, MAP is a very targeted assessment. And what the teachers typically do with MAP is they'll break down goal areas within the assessment to say like, oh, this is the discrete set of skills that this group of kids needs in order to grow on that assessment. So with a new curriculum, it's really hard to get down to that while you're also trying to learn what the curriculum has to offer. So matching the discrete skills to where the resources are in the curriculum takes a year or two for teachers to get familiar with that. So I would suspect that we will start to see that become a much stronger performance for students because they'll get back to using the discrete skill information to inform instruction. Whereas when you're teaching holistically, an assessment like the park, which we'll see scores, you know, in the fall for that, that will reflect a more holistic set of instructional opportunities for students, whereas MAP, again, you need to match the discrete skill set of the students to the instruction. And so I think you'll see this get better next year. But overall, those percentages of students meeting growth from fall to spring, still in seventh and eighth where we had more implementation time, certainly have been reflected. Sixth went up a little bit in that percentage from fall to spring as well from last year, so hopefully over time. Again, here's the spring to spring. You see the seventh and eighth grade where we had more implementation than not. Interestingly, on the other grade level that is closer to being, exceeding that bar is third grade, and that's where I had the most amount of teachers piloting the new ready John curriculum the year before last. So in that grade level, I had half the teachers at that grade level implementing. So that's why I think it's a good indicator that we'll see improvement over time. So again, you see some unevenness there, given the change in resources over the last few years. That's not shocking. And I feel like we're on a trend and a trajectory where we're only going to start to see stronger and stronger performance from our kids. And I know the teachers are excited to get back to being able to more intentionally match ELA now that they know the resources really well. As a highlight of that, we spent the last two weeks doing curriculum work while all the kids have been playing. And with the ELA, we've, and the mathematics as well, we've created now a one-step document that's going to allow teachers to scaffold it both for at-risk and advanced learners within their classrooms for their flexible groupings and have like a two-second place where they can get their resources and activities to make it easier to implement and target those skilled strands that we just talked about. So we've done some real good work for that for next year, so we're excited. Questions on MAP? I try to keep it simple. It's not easy stats to look at if you're not...
I just want to say that I think that the math numbers that you showed earlier look very good. They look very strong across the board with maybe one exception being the fourth grade that looks a little bit...
Yeah, and we know... Yeah.
Otherwise, I think they look great.
And we've already diagnosed the fourth grade and kind of where we think some of the opportunities are and where we can put some more support in place. So we had last year, two teachers that were working with the coach in fourth grade, and we've loaded some of the stuff that they worked on to share across the grade level about how to target. So we'll be working on that.
I think the middle school numbers for reading look quite good, too. I think I see a big improvement there as well, which is great.
Yeah, I'm excited. I'm excited. This is stuff that gets me excited.
It's exciting. Yeah. All right, thank you. Thank you.
That's it for the superintendent's report.
All right, thanks, Martha. So next up, we have the consent agenda with the board secretary. Like to read the consent agenda.
Sure. Tonight's consent agenda includes the minutes of the previous meetings, the closed session from May 16th, the regular business meeting from May 16th, and the committee of the whole from June 6th, the personnel report, the Pabels' pre-list of May 30th, the Pabels' pre-list of June 20th, the resolution for disposal of miscellaneous property, and the intergovernmental agreement between District 96 and West 40 Regional Safe Schools.
Mr. Ol, at this time, is there, are there any items on the consent agenda that any board member would like to have taken off for further discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Next item is Item G, prevailing wages for the 2018 year. At this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the prevailing wages for 2018 as presented?
So moved.
Is there any discussion on this topic? If not, then Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Next up is Riverside Educational Council. Does Riverside Educational Council have any comments? If not, we move right into the board member comments. Does any board member have any comments about anything they've participated in or seen recently or...
Can't remember the last time we were here.
Not, so I guess, school's out, so I guess we're not much for doing that in respect. So maybe move into the committee reports. So first up is finance. Rich, do you have any updates on finance?
No, just one thing to add. We've had actually some really good conversations with Jim Fitten, so we're excited about him joining the district here and look forward to some, to great times with Jim here soon.
Great times.
Thanks, Rich. Education, Sherri, do you have any updates on the education debate?
I'm continuing to implement the curriculum. They're going to be training this summer and just looking at the data. So you just saw it, so that's it.
Thanks, Sherri. And then finally, we get to policy. Dan, do you have any updates on policy?
Martha and I spoke on the latest issue of press that has come out, it's on the agenda tonight, so we'll be talking on those later. It's a long, somewhat intimidating list, however, we will try to be, give the attention that is needed for each one.
Great, all right, thanks, Dan. Okay, now we move on to old business. First item on old business is capital and technology expenditures. At this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the revised capital and technology expenditures as presented?
So moved.
Are there any comments or questions that a board member has on either the capital expenditures or the technology request for next year? I'd just like to thank Mr. Tofano and Martha for breaking out some of these costs and clarifying some what's new and what's old, and also for revisiting the projector question because I think, you know, you're raising good points that there's some questions about, you know, what, how they're going to be used as a course. I think we appreciate that you guys doing that. Anyone have any other questions or comments about either of these topics? If not, then Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Second item in old business is the summer facility improvements. At this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the revised summer facilities improvements as presented?
So moved.
Are there any questions or comments about the summer facilities updates? If not, then Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Kleiber? Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Next item is the resolution to waive limitation of administrative cost. So at this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the resolution to waive the limitation of administrative cost as presented?
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments about this item? I did have one question. I noticed there's a worksheet here that breaks down what our administrative cost growth has been, and it shows 9%, but it's a little bit unclear to me what that, what that 9% encompasses, where that's coming from. Martha, would you be able to...
I'm going to ask Rob to come up and speak to that.
So the 9% comes from the actual expenditures from 2016, '17, the actuals versus the budgeted for 2017, '18. And there's basically six areas, executive admin services, special area admin services, other support services, school administration, direction of business support services, internal services, and direction of central support services. So the biggest increase is coming from the direction of business support services.
What is that, what does that mean? I guess my question is, what is that, what does that mean, direction?
That's the business office.
And do we, do we know what the...
The difference is it was a part-time person versus a full-time person.
I see, okay, okay.
That's the, that's the major cost driver.
Got it, all right. Thanks very much. Thank you. Any other questions about this? If not, then Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. That concludes the old business. We now move into new business. First item in new business is the DLA memorandum of understanding for additional projects. There are two, two topics, as Martha mentioned in her update, that, that we're thinking about here in addition to the Ames addition, one of them being outdoor space at the schools, at the various schools, and the other is front entrance, front entrance way reconfigurations. So I don't know if, Martha, you'd like to say a few words about what we have here from DLA or...
Actually, I invited Carrie Matlock to join us tonight to speak to kind of the design ideas and how you would pursue the ideas that are encompassed in sort of a consideration of green space. We've talked about green space and how we can consider enhancing play and outdoor learning, perhaps shifting where parking and play occur. We know that we have very strict guidelines, that cars don't move when kids are out there. And I think we've addressed the safety measures, but we also feel that there's, you know, if there could be a better way to do it that speaks to sort of just improved experience for children, we would love to consider that. We know that there are concerns and limitations around how we would do that and what that would mean with harking off our sites and some things that, problems we have not solved yet, but that's all being considered within this MOU. And then we had also talked about a goal to secure the front offices at the three schools that don't have the secured front offices. So intentionally, Carrie's integrated these two ideas as really thinking about kind of the design ideas that are part of all the schools. We know that Blithe really doesn't need an enhancement of outdoor learning, but Blithe does need the enhancement of a secured front entrance. Hollywood needs consideration really for both, as does Central need consideration for both. So in a nutshell, that's it. But I know last time we talked about an MOU, there was just some questions about how DLA would work with the school district in pursuing that, so thought it might be helpful to have Carrie here if there are specific questions. So are there specific questions?
Maybe, does it make sense for Ms. Matlock to maybe give us an overview of what you, how you would go about doing this?
Sure. So it's basically a little similar to what we're doing at Ames, but not as thorough, right? Because we're not really looking at the educational backbone in deliverance of a design concept for that. a design concept for that. So really, it's more design studies of what we know as architectural solutions, to actually show you on paper what those might look like. Again, conceptual, but they are drawings, to be clear, and there will be multiple options. How many options, I can't say at this point. It'll depend on, but we will try as many as we possibly can to come up with something that's economical for the school district, and that is the goal. But it does involve meetings, and meeting with the focus groups at each building, whether that's the principal, and then, you know, a few teachers or other staff, and certainly the administration and the committee that we've been working with. So that's the goal, and then getting some designs out of that as we move forward. And obviously, cost estimates that go in conjunction with that.
At what point do you usually do the cost estimates? Do those come with the?
Before we do the presentation to you, right, we would have, because you're going to want to know what everything would cost. So when we present those designs, then we would go ahead and tell you, we're thinking approximately this dollar amount.
So I just, you're proposing to do one memorandum of understanding for both types of projects?
Correct, because they work really in conjunction with one another. So if we're redesigning the entrance for the facility or relocating the entrance, it might affect the site patterns and traffic circulation, so we want to look at that in conjunction with one another. That's how we do it as architects. We look at the building as a whole.
And in terms of, is your imagining you're going to meet with groups at each school?
Yes.
Sort of individually? Is that, with regard to the playgrounds, it seems to me of the outdoor spaces, it seems like there's also a question of the overall approach and philosophy of what you're trying to do?
Correct.
You know, which is, are you going to have like structures, or are you going to have more of a natural setting?
Yeah.
That doesn't seem like a school-by-school sort of topic necessarily. I mean, how would you?
Well, I don't necessarily know if that's going to be defined school-by-school, but it certainly is going to be a conversation. And that level of detail, I don't think gets drawn into this design. It's more of, okay, here's where we're going to have this type of space. It will be for play. This will be for parking. This will be the separation. Here is the safety element for this, and how does that impact the building as well? So how do we enter the building? Where is the lockdown point? How is that a safety improvement? And what does that cost?
And so that's not, you're not going to be designing playgrounds per se?
No, no, I'm not.
Okay. Just wanted.
We did have some discussion about that at Facilities Advisory, really drawing from the previous Playground Committee that had met, and I think, you know, Linda and Rich had input, really everybody there had to get some involvement prior to my coming. I know with the Playground Committee. So we had some conversations about that idea of sort of exploration, gross motor, what is it that we would really be looking for. We didn't decide anything there, but I thought we had a thoughtful discussion about some of the historical conversations that were occurring just, you know, three and four years ago on that topic.
Yeah, and hopefully the playgrounds, while you will not be involved in that part, will be going hand-in-hand with this. Is that the assumption, then, that as we're redesigning the space, at the same time, if we proceed with it, then we would?
I think the concept of that playground and the type that it is will be a conversation that is had to allocate space for it.
Right.
So whether that's for exploration or for traditional playground equipment, that will be an important part of the conversation, because they take up different types of space. So that will come into play. But what that looks like specifically will not happen right now. That would be your next phase, and whether or not you're including me in that decision or another type of consultant at that point is up to you.
And the timeframe, which, how long do you envision this?
I think we talked about October.
October, okay.
Committee update, beginning of November. Sorry, board presentation, December.
Yeah, so we'll have arrival at some type of design options for, yeah, for the committee in October, and then some revising of that, and then bringing that forward, right, at board presentation in December, so.
Do you want to have any questions, more further questions?
I just wanted to make a couple of points. While we're still in the midst of the Ames process, in particular with the Visioning Committee, I think I've been very satisfied with DLA and Carrie's involvement in that so far with respect to identifying everything that we should be considering for that project. Secondly, the structure of this MOU, it reflects the structure of the last MOU, which I'm satisfied with, where it's a TNM with a not-to-accede on it.
I think it's nice to see what kind of space we have access to before we decide the nature and the scope of the degree of style, because if it infects drainage or whatever, I'm not going to try and use it if it's not possible. So it'd be nice to hear about that. I'm really excited that we're moving forward on this. Yeah, me too. So this makes me happy. It's been a few years where we've been talking, and we don't really feel like we ever, we're not experts in it, so we don't really know what we have. So it's going to be really great to actually have an idea of what the possibilities are so we can proceed forward. I'm excited.
I think that was really the idea, you know, sort of within all of this, is not just to replace new playground equipment in the spaces we have it. We know at Ames, we think through sort of the visioning process, the configuration may be altogether different. We know there have been concerns at Central that just the space is very small. Is there a way to, you know, gain more space by looking at the back of the school or the courtyard? You know, we don't know, but I think these are things that DLA can help us with. And then at Hollywood, same thing, you know, is there a different way to sort of use the lot area there, so.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Ms. Matlock. Next up, we have a possible action item on the 92 Repton Road demolition. So I'm just going to read the motion. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the 92 Repton Road demolition bid approval as presented?
So moved.
May I ask a question? Carrie, do you?
I think we have to put the motion on the table, and then we can discuss. So I move.
Second, okay. So now we have opened up two questions and comments. Julie had a question for?
We just saw the numbers today. They seem on the high side. Is this, what's, can you give some thoughts on why the demolition is on the high side? I would have expected something more in the area of 25,000, 35,000?
Sure. So actually, that's a good number to start at, because a year and a half ago, your district had received quotes for the demolition of the house between $30,000 and $35,000. That did not include a number of things. One of them was asbestos abatement. And in Cook County, you're held to some pretty stringent obligations for that. So the big cost of this demolition, which we've unveiled throughout the course of our methodical process of going through what we needed to go through, right, and the village requires us to test to see if there's any asbestos, which was not done when you received those quotes initially. So we had that testing done, and then it was determined that there is asbestos-containing material within the stucco on the garage, and all of that needs to be tented with a wood structure and then abated. And that's all, you know, Illinois Department of Public Health. So that's, those requirements are set in stone, so, you know, you'll have to have a licensed asbestos contractor to do that. Those numbers were not included there. The prices for those two bidders that submitted bids came in the range of between $25,000 and $39,000 to do that work.
Just the asbestos.
Just the asbestos. If you were to add those numbers together and add inflation to those other two numbers that I talked about, you, I would, and because what they didn't include, and I can't tell from their proposals, but I'm not sure if there was prevailing wage involved. I'm not sure if any site utilities that were incorporated into it. There's landscaping into our documents, and then, you know, erosion control blankets and so forth, and all the parameters that we need to hit for the village. So those types of things were not articulated in these documents that I received. Now, they may very well have been implied, but I certainly don't know that, and I doubt it, because they weren't bidding off of a specific set of documents, which is what we did, so that you could get those numbers. Those two bids are $2,000 apart from each other, which means they interpreted it the same way, and they're pretty consistent. Do I feel that there's a little inflation factor? There is. There's also a $5,000 allowance included within this bid. So all those together would get you to that number pretty easily and justifiably. So I understand that it's a larger number than you would anticipate, and certainly it is for me, too, but the asbestos abatement does really let itself toot that number. That's the huge part of this cost that was unveiled throughout our process.
Carrie, you also shared with me, because we were talking about this before, so this, and I, you know, the board sort of kind of considered this, this is, you know, we knew that the bid opening was yesterday, and we thought if the board was comfortable moving forward, if the board was not, and that's the conversation we're having right now. But you also said that in that sort of preliminary, preliminary numbers from a year and a half ago, there also wasn't removal of like the basement?
Yes, oh, that's very true.
And sort of filling with like, you use the, like clean fill, right? So this idea that it can be built upon as opposed to like gravel fill or something.
To what extent, they were going to remove the foundation, I'm not sure of. They do allude to some concrete removal. I'm not sure if it's in its entirety, which is what we have in our documents, it's pretty explicit, and what to do with that, and then also to put compactable fill that could be suitable for building. You would not have received that in this other one. That is for certain. It was black dirt that was going to be put back. So that's something that would have had to be pulled back out and then replaced so that we could build on top of it. This is done, again, in one of those efforts to prepare you for your next phase, which is moving forward with Ames' property.
I know you already said that, so I just want to make sure I've got the numbers straight in my head. What were it, a year ago, when these other bids?
February of 2017 is when I-
And how much were they for, again?
And they were roughly $30,000 and $35,000.
Okay.
That was just to pull out the house. There was a landscaping. I'm not sure if it was prevailing wage.
And there was no-
One of them was a local contractor, was from North Riverside.
Okay.
So that's, you know, it's important to note.
And there was no asbestos abatement?
There was no asbestos, no asbestos abatement, and no compactable fill. So there are a lot of if factors in that. I understand that number is, you know, questionable. In fact, you know, when I first heard it, I was a little surprised as well, but after digging in and understanding it more, and then actually having the validation of those last two quotes, I think that helped to put a lot of perspective on things. So we don't like it, it's a fact. This is what it was going to take to do this, and it would have been realized today or when we do the Ames project, because we would have demolished it for eventually if you were to move forward with some type of addition in that location. I will say that we had eight bidders to begin with, and only two submitted. So work right now, there's a lot of it out there. And I don't think that that's going to be a huge cost difference moving forward if you were to stop and rebid this in the fall at any point in time. Maybe a small savings, but I'm not sure, I can't even be convinced of that, because as we move forward to the next season's construction, I think that inflation's only going to grow.
I'm a bit surprised about this, is that if, you know, you talk to people in town who have torn down houses, I don't know if they probably haven't had asbestos in the garage stucco, but the price range is not anywhere near.
Are they prevailing wage?
I don't know. I don't know that.
It's a big difference. That's what you're required to by law as a school district, so you have to pay that. And then also, you know, we have in our bid documents that they have to perform certain aspects of the project. They're having to coordinate the asbestos abatement as well, and that's certainly, you know, if you were going to talk to a residential contractor who says, you know, I can tear down a house for $10,000, and certainly that may be the case, but what, to what standards and, you know, what stipulations do they have? I'm not sure that it's apples to apples. When we ask these contractors to bid, we have them do a bid bond, which means if they back away from the project, you have some protection, you know, if they stand by their bids. They, these are reputable contractors, and those are the ones that, you know, have participated. While we did invite everyone to participate, these are the ones that came forward and participated and submitted a bid.
So when you say prevailing wage, does that mean that if you get like a residential contractor that doesn't use, doesn't typically pay, does that mean that they don't bid on this kind of project? Is that how that works?
That's correct.
So all of the people that are private developer, or the companies that private developer would use, which don't pay prevailing wages, they wouldn't, all those companies, you're saying, would not bid on this kind of project?
They may, but that they have to prove that they're paying prevailing wage at some point in time, because you, as a school district, are required to keep that on file for the next three years after every construction project. And it has to be proven by those contractors. This will be, this will be the case for everything that we do moving forward. It has been for, I think, the last five years. So, and it's based upon Cook County. So you're in Cook County, and that's why you'll have to hit the rates that are published. And if you don't, then that's a violation.
So if we take out, you said 23, the range for the asbestos abatement was 25,000 to 39,000?
That's correct. So that's where the two bidders' numbers.
So if we take out, say, the lower bidder, 25,000, that leaves about 60,000 left. So 60,000 just to tear down the house?
So if you were to, so again, like I talked about, there's, there was elements of this left out that are not, were included in our documents, because they had to bid a specific set of documents. These were just, I look at the house, here's my number, kind of thing, which is, so they're not even the same numbers, that 20, the 30,000 and the 35,000. If they were bidding it today and looking at our documents, I could justify $40,000 to $45,000 would be those contractors' numbers.
$40,000 to $45,000.
Yes.
By adding those other specifications?
By adding the other specifications and inflation rate for a year and a half ago to now. So that certainly makes sense to me.
Inflation has been almost zero in that period, so I can imagine that's going to be a factor.
Not in the construction industry, it hasn't. We're seeing increases right now, if we're looking at new construction, with the thought of new tax, you know, there's some taxes on different types, on steel, so forth. Contractors are putting numbers in there to compensate for that for the future. So while that may not be the case in every single trade, it is, as we move forward into the construction industry, because I keep in contact with all of the contractors that I deal with, and then also construction managers, and they are reprising me of that being a number increase for certain.
So I guess, is there any economies of scale to do this demolition with, when we do the addition?
That is what I originally suggested.
What do you think?
Yeah, what do you, yeah. Do you have an idea, like a ball?
Well, we're already going to be, if, depending on the solution to the building, we may be creating some major demolition. So if we're going to be removing something significant in your building to make way for what we have to do, tearing out a wall, you know, removing some other large concrete structure, then if they're doing that already at the house, then there is an economy of scale. And so that is why, but the idea and the charge moving forward was to get the green space as soon as possible, which is what I thought the goal was. So that's why we move forward with this, and that's why we're here today.
Right. And so I guess my question to the group here is, when do we anticipate that we might break ground on the addition? And is, what's the value of that green space? So are we going to be breaking ground in a year, and is green space worth $87,000?
Well, it's also an empty house sitting there. I think it also had to do with the house sitting.
Right. But I guess, what is, I mean, what is the value to us to like possibly sit on this versus doing this now, as something that we're going to essentially tear up the ground again possibly to put an addition on?
You wouldn't have to tear it up again.
Well, no, the ground, we might have to, like, because we have to put the backfill in or that-
You'll be disrupting, right? Yes, we will disrupt the site. There will be dust barriers, there, so forth. Yes, there is replication to different locations.
Right.
Carrie, without committing you to a number, the economies of scale, considering that the building itself would be more specific demolition with very isolated areas and very designed things versus the heavy equipment that they would have to pull in to do the house. Are we talking 10%, 20%? Do you think? Do you even want to guess?
I don't want, no, I don't want to guess, but I just know, what I know about construction is that it's better to do it all at once, which is why I suggested it in the first place. It's not, I don't think it's going to be significant. I do think that it, you know, it's not like we're going to save half this cost by doing that, right? So I think, you know, smaller percentage, but I do think there will be a savings. And whether we look at it, but then there's also the fact that if we postpone it, you know, costs may go up. Whether you want to say it's inflation, or you want to say it's material costs, however you would like to look at it, costs will go up. That is for certain.
Labor shortages.
Yeah, so.
Sorry, could you repeat that, Sherri? Sorry. I don't think there's any risk to pausing this process right now. And my perspective is that this is a shocking increase. So I don't think there's any risk to us saying, hold on a second, let's just make sure we're doing the right thing here with these costs. So I, for one, am not going to support this resolution tonight.
What's the second? Like, what do you mean, till we break ground at Ames?
No, not necessarily. Not necessarily. I think, you know, when we, even though it was a year and a half ago, right, and we can tag in inflation to that, and we can say, as we're sitting here right now, that, well, they didn't have all the factors as part of the big documents. Well, let's pull back for a second and just make sure that. There's no, in my opinion, there's no need for us to vote on this thing tonight.
I guess my thought on this is, I mean, I think we should vote on this tonight, because I guess the thing is, do we do this now, or do we just wait until we do the addition? My thought is, I don't really want, I don't think we need to be revisiting whether or not demolish, to demolish this like another three months, another six months. I do think Carrie's right. There is a lot of uncertainty right now in the market and in trades. I mean, we have a very serious looming trade war that could conceivably like cause all these prices to go up. I mean, the dishwasher, I mean, I was hearing on NPR the other day, like washers and dryers are already up 20% over last year. Can you make a forecast of what that's going to, how that's going to play out in the next two years? No, I can't, but I can assure you that if, I can assure you that if we do go into a trade war, we're going to be seeing like 20, 30, those increases aren't going to be-
Throw the economy to a massive recession, and then people are out of work.
I have a functional-
It's not clear to me how that's going to plan.
Well, you can't, you won't know that. I have a functional question for Martha. If we do this like we intended, can Todd and everyone at Ames use the green space and when? That's what I want to know.
If the house comes down?
That's right. When could the, you know, we released, just for a year? I mean, could they use it for a year? I'm just saying for one year.
As fast as they can grow grass.
Yes.
That's it. So once they get it down, they can use it, right?
As fast as they can grow the grass, so there's not a big mud.
But, I'm just saying, I mean, does this benefit that school to have that space for one year? I don't know what the benefit is, but that's a question.
Is it just one year, or is it possibly two years?
I don't know.
We don't know the answer.
Well, what I'm saying is, the Ames construction, realistically, is looking probably like it's two years, not one year. So we're talking a two-year.
I think there's a value to green space, definitely, for that school.
I personally think so. Until we figure out the space, they might use it for something.
But whether we make the decision tonight or in a month-
But how long are these good for?
I believe no more than 30 or 60 days.
Yeah.
So I think it's 60 days typically.
Is it normal to get, only get two responses? You said you-
Like I originally said, there were eight bidders who picked up drawings, and then right now, in fact, our bid date was supposed to be last week, and we found out we were only going to get one, and we procrastinated it so that we could get two. We had three, but another one dropped out again. So what that means to me is that there's a lot of work out there, and, you know, they decided that they didn't need it.
Could that mean, could that mean they all don't do asbestos abatement also, or do they all do?
No, they all did. They all did. Yeah, we made sure that those contractors-
That's the question I had.
Mm-hmm. No, it's just asbestos right now is- No, it's just asbestos, right now, is, is very busy. It's the busiest time for them. So.
Is it because of the year, is it because of summer, like?
First thing in summer, everything, that's when asbestos abatement happens. The first, the first month of summer vacation.
While the kids are gone, yeah.
Yep, that is it.
So say we, say we did vote and we accepted the bid, the recommended bid, when does this happen?
I believe within the next 30 days, so.
So if we laid it.
Before, oh yeah, that's key. I think you want to understand that, right? We don't want to impact, I don't think you want to have a building coming down when you have kids in school.
That's what I'm saying. So if we wait 30 days.
Right, if you procrastinate this, then, then I wouldn't see this happening until the summer.
Then you're going to push it again, because the kids are coming.
I wouldn't characterize it as procrastinating.
I didn't, well, that is certainly not a derogatory term. I was just trying to tell you that if you, if you put it off, I don't think you want to do it during the school year.
I personally like the idea of a little bit of green space, even temporarily until that building gets situated. I think it's extremely useful for a crowded space.
I think we could very cheaply put a fence across the front yard and give the kids access to the front yard.
Maybe, maybe not. Depends on what they'll let us do.
I don't believe the house is a safety issue. It has yet to be proven to be a safety issue in the past year and a half or two years. So I don't think that is a reason to justify needing to demo it right now.
I guess I do have a question maybe from Martha. Have we had any complaints or anything from the neighbors or the community or the police about?
No, I spoke to the village just the other day, and they said that as we shovel the snow and mow the grass, that perhaps we're better than the previous owners. So I think, I think we're fine with that. You know, Joel, that's an interesting idea. Can they go sort of play in what feels like the yard of a house, as opposed to it feeling like a, what I think would feel more like a field?
With appropriate safety measures.
Dan, do you have any comments on this? Do you have any questions?
Well, I'm listening, taking it all in. It's, I am concerned about delaying it and not having the green space. That's probably my biggest concern there. It is a much bigger bid than we expected. It's interesting to hear how we started out with eight bidders and we whittled down to two. I did have somewhat of a question here in that, in the notes. The lowest cost bidder did not acknowledge the addendums, but then did post afterward. I think there was a discussion afterward, so?
Yes, so the addendums, one of the things actually that wasn't included in these original two bids was saving some stained glass windows. Selective demolition is different than demolition, so there's a cost for that. There's an extra that would be added to these bids because of that. So one of, the addendum number one was for that, was for a couple of stained glass windows to be salvaged and turned over to you. Second, there was a postponement of the bid. And then third, I forget what the third one was, it was some clarification on some asphalt removal sections and so forth. So those were, they obviously saw them, because they wouldn't have known the bid date had they not. It was just an error on their bid form, which happens from time to time. And you have the right to waive any irregularities associated with that, which typically is done, given to save the $2,000.
But, so those are, the way you just expressed that, those are essentially, the costs are all built into the bids, then?
Correct.
Okay.
And the costs also include that, like grading it out, so it's, like you said, as fast as grass can grow, but it's not going to be any hole where the foundation was.
No, no, not at all. There's really, it would be safe space. And it'll, and it will be seeded, and then there will be a blanket on it to promote the growth and to prevent erosion. So as fast as that seed can grow. I mean, we could do something else and put SOD there and make it faster, too. So, you know, those are ideas, but that's, that was more economical was to do the seed.
So one of the things I'm thinking about is when we, a couple of years ago, we looked at, we repaved the parking lot at Central and Hauser, and we, the first time we put that out to bid, I think it was a little bit late in the year. We got, we got one bid, not one as opposed to two, but the bid was something like 630,000. And I think at that point, the architect said, "That's, you know, that seems reasonable." And we said, "No, it's only one bid. It's not very high." We decided to put it back for more bids. We got more bids the next year, and the price was like 400,000. It was like a third less than what we had that year. And I guess to me, it's like the two factors that bother me. I mean, first of all, I totally agree that it'd be good to have green space for these kids. And that's why I think we actually proposed this rather than waiting. That's why we're, that's why we're here. What I was thinking was that it would be in that 35,000 range, because that's actually in the high side of what, when I talk to private contractors, now you say they're not paying prevailing wages, but that's, that's, now I thought that's in the high side of what we would actually get. When it comes back at, you know, almost three times that, you know? It's like, to me, it's like when you get two bids and it's three times that, it makes me a little bit leery. That's, so that's my hesitation. It's like, you know, geez, now it's, now it's not a small number anymore.
It's the asbestos. They never, they never knew that was there in the first bid. So of course, it's going to be at least a third or more.
Well, the calendar's against us here, going into the summer, it's the busiest time. So that might explain some of the increase, but how different is it going to be if we wait? And really, when is the next good time? Because how long are we going to need? We can't, we're going to do this essentially next summer, right?
Well, we could bid it in January or February and hit the contractors when they're looking for work, rather than in summer, when they've already got all their work scheduled, and this is just a nice extra.
I guess, like, if we did do bid it in January, and let's say it comes back at like now 60,000 or something, do we really want to then have green space for one year for 60,000? I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying 60.
I kind of feel like it's either, I mean, it's either now or way later.
I agree with that.
I don't think spending even half of this a year later is even worthwhile for the green space. We're talking about the green space.
Can you demolish in the winter? I mean, can you demolish in like winter break time?
Sure, sure you can.
Is that enough time, though, realistically?
To demolish during winter? In the winter break, or?
In the winter, during the winter break.
I don't, I don't necessarily know if that's going to offset costs based upon different conditions.
I mean, you're also going to begin with, I mean, the holidays. I mean, you got, you're hearing here, winter breaks over the holidays, and I guess the question is, then, too, we're not going to have grass. I mean, spring's going to come, it's going to be a muddy field.
So certainly, you know, whichever way you would like to go, that, it's fine. It will work either way. It's just, this is the condition.
We can either put this to a vote right now, or we could say, we heard this for the first time literally today. We got this information. We could think about it and vote on it at the next meeting. It's another possibility. If we think we want more time to think about it. I don't know, what do people want to do? Want to vote on it now?
I don't think it should come to a vote now.
The reason I think it should come to a vote now, because if next time our meeting is going to be in July, we get it, we have, they have to get in and then essentially immediately tear it down, plant the grass. I think it's either now, or we just don't do it and wait until it's construction. That's the way I look at it.
If people have an agreement, then we just have to vote, and however it goes, it goes. Okay, that sounds like we had an agreement there.
Well, let's see what happens here.
Marjorie, please mother roll.
I think I already got it projected in my head.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Wait, we're voting to accept the bid. I'm trying to make sure. Yeah, would you repeat the motion?
To approve the 90, 90 Repton Road demolition bid as presented, approve it as presented, yes.
And Mr. Hunt said aye.
He said aye.
Mrs. Murphy says aye.
Okay. Mr. Bersati?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
No.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Marjorie. Okay, moving on to the next item. We have purchase from new copiers. I think this was something that had, was inadvertently left off of the previous, previous technology updates.
Sort of, with some sort of technology and operations.
Operations.
And Don has taken this on as a project, so I appreciate him coming forward with the information.
This is an update, one of the charts. We're waiting for a service report to get back, so.
So this is the same as what's in the board book, but within an addition?
There was one table that was missing one line of information.
No, the Hauser LRC.
Correct.
Okay.
So we identified a few copiers that needed to be replaced, and they are identified in the top table due to either age or service issues and copy count totals. So put together a request for quotes, and not only on copiers, but also for managed print services, which is essentially having a service provider also take care of our toner and service for our printer fleet in the district. So the, the first, well, the second table, Table A, shows the response to the request for quotes. And the copier industry is a very, very competitive industry. I reached out to about 10 vendors, and eight of them responded, some of them multiple times, and with decreasing proposals. And even since this has been printed, they've come back, where, you know, we'll continue to evaluate them. But right now, the two that we've identified as being closely competitive is with the, with Impact Networking and Proven IT. These two, I'll continue to work with these vendors over the next couple of weeks. I want to go revisit these copiers and verify some specification items on them. Additionally, really want to look through the proposals to ensure that some of the components that impact pricing, for instance, your per copy count, your cost per copy on black and white and color. Some of them have stated that'll be fixed over the five-year period. Some have, you know, graduating increases based, based on CPI. So really want to ensure that what they have specified in their initial proposal is in the fine print within all the documentation. Also want to verify response times and such, so have that. But when we come back next month, we'll have a recommendation, you know, based on, based on that. But we've really got it narrowed down to the two. As for the managed print, again, we got a really good response to it, also very competitive. The, the one that Martin Whalen, who is our current service provider for our existing Xerox copiers, was very aggressive, along with another provider that was Genesis Technologies. When you look at the cost over the course of five years, because Genesis Technologies did not have a fixed rate on their, their per copy costs, they're actually very, very, very close in terms of cost. So it'll be the recommendation at the July meeting to go with Martin Whalen. We've been very happy with the level of service and response times to the existing copiers. And that's kind of a summary. If there's any questions.
So your, your recommendation then is, is to do what exactly? To do?
On, for the copiers, I'll come back, really going to be working with those two copy vendors, and come back with the one that we feel, you know, number one, that the overall costs, but then also that the, what was identified in their initial proposal is in the fine print of the actual final contract. So that will be for the copiers. And then for the managed print, the, we'll come back with a recommendation for the Marlon Whalen, Martin Whalen, for those services.
On the copier listing, the pricing seemed pretty wide and varied, although I guess, even though a lot of the company names are the same, the model numbers were different. So is that what played a part in some of the large price discrepancies?
And, and some of the models, I mean, even within the same models, there were some discrepancies. And actually, Joel and I were, we happened to bump into each other on the train today. We were talking about this, that what you find is that at times, because you do have two factors in your total cost, which is the copier cost, and then your per click charge, your toner charges, service charges. Well, a vendor could provide a lower cost on the hardware, but then they're making it up over, you know, over time on the, on your actual outputs. But there was some, some discrepancies with those hardware costs, even with our incumbent provider, and coming in much higher on the hardware than like proven. They both bid on Xerox models, but there was a discrepancy in it. And it was just really getting more aggressive. Again, since this was printed, Martin Whalen has come back with a more aggressive price. But at some point, we have to, you know, it's great that we'll, we have, we'll have some good options, and that costs, quotes that are being provided to us are, continue to go downward. But, you know, at, it's, it's just a highly competitive, competitive market. And I think with a lot of service providers, their key is get in, get their foot in the door, and so.
Asterix in the first table for Hauser?
Yes.
This is related to the note below the table? Because there's no asterix to connect it with.
Um.
Is that why it's only five tabs?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
But that's why it's not?
Yes, well, and that was the reason, when we first got the service report back on the top table for the Hauser Library, because the, the number of service calls seemed low.
Yeah, but it's not.
Only five. But what we found out was that actually, the, the collater and, collater and staple function on that device doesn't even work anymore. So there's less components that are functioning, and that's probably one of the reasons why.
I have a really, it may sound like a silly question, but when I was a teacher, we sometimes had students using machines, and that ended very quickly, because they weren't trained on the machines and sometimes broke the machines. What is our procedure for that? Or even staff? I mean, are they trained to use them?
Students don't use our copiers, or if they do, it's, it's within.
I'm not saying there aren't competent kids, but things happen. Or even the staff, you know, because they're tricky.
No, because, well, our, this is the only copier that is really in general.
Accessibility, yeah.
Exactly, because all of them are in the office area.
Okay.
But yeah, they're predominantly, yeah, it's used by staff.
I'm sure they're all being very careful. It's just, they're so sensitive that the littlest thing makes them go crazy.
Any further questions for Mr. Tifano on the copy machine question?
No, but I'd like to thank Darren for putting this together very clearly, so we have a good comparison of what our costs are and where we can truly benefit from changing how we do things, such as the managed print. Thank you.
Mr. Tifano, next up, we have item four is stipend proposals for next year. Martha, you put together a proposal with a couple of new stipends, and maybe you could tell us exactly what you're proposing here?
Sure. So the stipends are a part of the negotiated agreement. So, but there's a part that we really felt we could move forward, even though the negotiated agreement is not, you know, fully and finally agreed to. We're still in the process of negotiations. But the stipends, the board does annually approve stipends, and the changed stipends that are represented this year represent some clubs and activities that were added, or co-curriculars is really the term we use, that were added last year. So the current contractual agreement with Riverside Education Council is that stipends that were not part of the contract back in 2016 come up for approval, even though they were already approved last year. So you have that list of the Chamber Choir in Grade Seven and Eight, and Ames STEM Science Club, which actually didn't happen because the teacher had it out on medical leave. So that one was approved, but we never, we were never able to implement that one. The Blithe Park Garden Club, the Central Running Club, and the Hollywood Newspaper. And then this year, there have been proposals that have come forward for a Central Art Club, a Hollywood Art Club. It's actually the same art teacher that would want to run that after school, as well as a Hollywood, essentially, Book Club, and a Hollywood Volunteer Club. So as, maybe you don't know, there's sort of a, kind of an open invitation to teachers to propose co-curricular stipended activities that would really enhance the after-school, or could be even before-school, or lunchtime programming and activities for our students. And then they're reviewed by the Riverside Education Council and the administrative team. It's kind of, are they of value to, to our students? But then really, it comes to the board for consideration, and this is really the new business consideration. We would look at it again in July for possible approval. But to understand the kinds of activities, when you look at the stipend list, you'll also realize there's things like mentoring. There's things like before and after-school supervision, chaperoning of some of our overnight field trips. So there's a number, and all of our athletics. So there's a lot of activities, some that are more kind of formal and supervisory, and some that really represent the co-curricular and after-school activities. And so then what you also see at the bottom is what would be a projected total amount and our current total amount. What's, I think always part of this, too, is sometimes, like, for example, mentoring is a good example. Teachers submit a time sheet to represent the hours that they actually put in to do the mentoring. If they don't do those hours, they don't get paid. So the projected and the actual are going to be different, as they, they were in this case. So, the projected and the actual are going to be different, as they were in this case. But I wanted the board to consider this, obviously, per our contractual agreement, to also understand that there are some nuances that will still have to get cleaned up and clarified through the negotiated agreement process. But really, it's considering the additional clubs and activities that were added last year and the new ones that are proposed for this year.
Can you talk about sessions? Can you explain how that impacts?
So, they run a 10-weeks, one teacher for a 10-week session. And so, when they talk about doing a two-session, it would be to do two 10-weeks, so 20 weeks.
Two different people?
Actually, the same, like, for example, the Hollywood and Central Art Club is the same person that wants to do it. She just wants to run it at two different, sort of like a first and a second trimester.
Okay.
I think these new clubs look great. They look very interesting. My only question is, you might have answered this, just want to make sure I understand, the totals for the current year are 202,000?
The actual totals.
The actual total.
Yeah.
And then the projected total for next year is 223,000?
Right. So, that, so there were some, so when you look at the actual, there's some that didn't get fulfilled.
Okay.
And then there's this whole new, you know, a new set of.
The new set is about 4,000 extra, so. So, you're saying there's some that we?
It's like the mentoring one, like, that's another, there's about a $7,000 difference.
So, I think where it's confusing a little bit is the first column that has a total of 135,000 isn't really a total. That's just a total of one.
I'm just talking about the second column and the fourth.
Right, I know. So, I'm saying, if you're looking at that 202.
Yes.
We should actually be comparing it to the projected.
223.
No. I'm saying, this total actually would add up to a lot different if you multiplied it by the amount.
Isn't that the second column?
Right.
202.
So, what I'm, yes, so what I'm trying to say, this number is actually way bigger than the 202.
Because if it ran two sessions, it only gets counted as one unit.
You have two of these people, but this is only an addition of these numbers, not the amount of each of them.
Not multiplied by the people doing it.
So.
Why aren't they real for the amount of stipends per topic?
I don't know. So, I'm just saying, when we look at the 202.
That's the actual number we spent, how much we spent.
Right. The projected is probably more like 223, because if you look through here, we didn't actually spend everything that was projected.
So, that's my question. Where's the?
I think it seems to be revised. Well.
Or do you?
I don't even know if there's a discrepancy, because we have this real number. It would be, if we had the projected for 20 last school year and the projected from this school year.
You're saying the projected from last year would have been something like 220,000?
That's what I'm guessing.
But we didn't spend everything we projected.
Right. So, then we only spent 202. So, I think these.
Is the addition of this with what we actually used and what we didn't?
Yeah. So, the first column has to be times by the numbers in some of those to create a true actual. So, that's why I'm saying.
But you're saying that we didn't spend it, so?
I think you'd want to see a budget, an actual and a budget, and that's where you'll be able to tell, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Because 202 compared to 223 seems like, oh, my God, we're spending 20 grand more.
10% more, right.
But I don't really think we are, because I think that.
You think, you're thinking that next year we'll spend, we won't spend everything we projected.
Well, I just think this number that says 135 is actually probably closer to 220, is what I'm saying.
Linda, what you're saying is absolutely true. You can compare the 135 to the 140. That's about what we're looking at in terms of the increase.
Right.
Plus, a little bit more for some of the multiple session type items.
Well, that's assuming that the number is, the multiplier is the same. We have the same number of staff.
Do we have a projected multiplier for each of these? I would think we could.
And some we do. So, like, I look at them, like, the one that, because I think this is interesting how we do this one, so we call it a time sheet stipend. So, just like the mentoring beginning teachers, we talk about nine mentors. So, that was based on number of beginning teachers this year. But then you'll see that she projects it to be up to 10,700, as if there were the same number of teachers and that everybody put in all their possible hours. Which that was one particular area where people didn't fulfill all their hours, not because.
I think it'd be good to see how many and what the max is, you know, like, but, you know, like, what they can max do, just to compare the two.
Right. Or as you said, last year's number may be, last year's budget, say.
Why don't you just see last year's projected and last year's actual, and then see the same thing for this year? That's what I would look at.
Well, it'll be 1.2% less, essentially, with the.
With the increase in more activities too.
Right. So, yeah, so then you could actually see the percent increase plus the amount of activities, like how much does that actually come out to?
Because I think what the board, I mean, certainly to look at the bottom line total cost, but also that idea of increasing activities at the school. So, like Jeff, you were saying, you really value.
Oh, yeah. That's spending 4,000 hours for these clubs, sounds great. But then where's the other 16,000 coming in? That's my question.
Yeah.
So, we can look at a revision to bring some clarity to this. So, I wanted you to see the new clubs and activities. I mean, I find it interesting that, I think there's a very robust offering. I think it's really great for our kids. We don't charge a dime. I think that's been a philosophical decision that the board made a while back. My understanding is, someone was telling me the history that when we stopped offering home economics and some other things like that, that there was, I know, cooking class at Hauser, which I think is now gone, because I think the person who ran it is retiring. But anyway, that how some of these clubs and activities became very much by design, something the school district wanted to do, wanted to support student participation. And so, I think it's a very generous, I think, very exciting and, you know, very engaging thing that the board offers as another real asset to the district. So, I just wanted, again, to bring it back, and I think that's really why it comes back to the board for approval, is making sure everyone's comfortable with the level of cost.
I don't think it's as good with the students, though. I would say it's one of the best ways we have to encourage teacher growth and expression. I mean, if you give them a place to express their talent, you'll notice they have better retention, they're more invested with the kids, and it ends up being better for the district, so, yeah.
How many we do is certainly a question.
And sometimes teachers have to build relationships with students that they wouldn't necessarily see in their classes and at their grade level.
And I just thought at the middle school level, that there are so many different offerings that people can feel that there's something that they fit into or feel comfortable with, you know, like, there's just, if I'm not into sports, I could be into this or that. And I just.
I do have a question just regarding the Young Author Program. I'm just sort of wondering, why is there like a discrepancy of about four, like, two to four hours between the larger schools and the smaller schools?
More submissions, I would guess?
No, more time spent, like, for the program.
Yeah, Merrill's actually done a pretty detailed analysis of young authors, because it's something that used to include like a trip down state for a celebration competition, and that went away. So, the hours spent varied there, and then.
They actually met at a committee, and they were logging their hours for the last couple of years and how much time it took. It's just the sheer numbers.
Numbers?
Yeah, the numbers of students at Hollywood employed. It takes a few less hours to coordinate the books and get everything where it needs to go. So, it's not much of a difference, but we literally intentionally logged the hours to get the stipend.
Hey, I was just sort of wondering, I just, because we didn't do it for any other school.
It's surely the number of students.
All right.
Thanks, Merrill.
So, any other comments or questions about the stipend proposal? If not, we move on to the item five, IASB Press Issue 98.
Now for the exciting stuff.
Martha and Dan, if you want to maybe give us some highlights on that, or?
I could read them all. Let's see. So, yes, Martha and I spoke on the IASB Press Issue, the latest one that came down earlier today. There is a long list, as we see on the agenda here. Now, the good news is that the vast majority that's on the list are five-year renewals. So, where you have five-year renewals, the IASB has taken a look at the policies. They've reviewed them, in some cases, made minor updates and adjustments. I think in some cases, they've taken out some of the wording in the titles or changed footnotes. There's not a whole lot of change to the vast majority that we see on this list. I think the important ones are the ones where there's, we probably should focus the most upon. The first item on the list here with the Exhibit E, the Checklist for Superintendent Employment Contract Negotiation, we just saw that one recently as we were working on Martha's new contract. What we have in the new updated version, it's a lot more material, looks like a lot of great information. Somewhat disappointing, we didn't have it with us a couple of months back, but we will have it with us the next time when we're going back through this again. And I think that will serve us well and serve other boards out there that can use it in the more immediate future. The policy listed here for fiscal goals and objectives, not much changes to that, but it's important to note, we've talked about it particularly when we're talking about expenditures for the Ames Project, and it notes again that the policy states a 40% cushion is what is basically where we have up to our spending limits. For accounting and audits, I don't think a whole lot of change was put to that policy. The one that's asked us a question that talks about the curriculum content, this is actually specific to cursive writing, which I guess a lot of districts have gone away with. I think Martha was saying earlier today, that's not something Riverside had ever discontinued using.
And I think Merrill did forever.
I'm going to say that right now.
So, one of the things that is talked about there is, do you want to specify a grade level? And although we do it in second grade right now, Merrill and I were just talking today that she probably would suggest not specifying the grade level, that it could be second grade, it could be third grade, and to maybe retain that flexibility as we look at the curricular demands at each grade level and how those may modify or shift over time.
Yeah, I have a question regarding this policy, because I was looking, I was reading it, and in number three, it's basically saying kindergarten, third grade, provided, basically it's talking about violence prevention and conflict resolution should be taught, but only if it's funded by private grants or the federal government.
Which one are you in, or are you in the curriculum content?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Six, 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 three. It says the conflict resolution and violence prevention should.
Wait, six, six?
Sixty, item three.
Sixty, item three, okay.
So, it's not a part that is changed with the process?
Right. I'm just calling it out, because it just seems sort of odd to me that, I mean, I think that's an important thing and that we should be teaching, and it shouldn't be contingent on private grants or federal government funding. I think that should just be something that we should be doing regardless. And that's, that just sort of seemed really odd that that was in there. I don't know if there's a reason for that, like, why we're not teaching it unless we get, like, funding.
I think it's a, I don't know for sure, but when I was in Lombardi and going through this process, I think that wording is in there because of budget cuts in districts where finances were super tight. And so, there's certain things that are absolutely mandated, and then certain things that you were supposed to demonstrate good faith, effort, in being able to fund them if you were cutting them from your budget. And so, if they demonstrated that they couldn't fund them. So, I think that policy language is in there because of that flexibility, but I could double-check it. We do all of it regardless of grant money, because it's just good practice and it's part of the health curriculum.
Well, it's also just, I think you could say it's really integrated through the PBIS and, you know, just the social, emotional learning curriculum too.
Let's see. So, and the other two, they're, number five and six kind of relate to each other, and this is the 750 School Admissions and Student Transfers, relates back to six, 135, and this is for Advanced Placement. And this talks about setting up a process and offering something for parents who are looking to have their kids join school early, either kindergarten or first grade, I think, are specified in the policies.
And that's very consistent with all the changes that the Advanced Learning Committee addressed just recently.
Yeah. So, yeah, six, 135 is the overall policy, and 750 makes references back to it. Other than that, again, most of them fall into minor changes. Sometimes wording, I noticed in a couple of them where it had Illinois abbreviated, HIEL, it now spells it out to Illinois. Some others, again, they struck language from the title.
The lawyers have lots of time when they're.
A lot of footnote changes, yes. Yes, a lot of first-year associates burned a lot of midnight oil getting those footnotes updated.
Maybe even the summer ones.
But again, this is something we, the board subscribes to, and these are recommended changes and generally accepted. You know, definitely good for Dave to catch that one item there. That's something perhaps, I don't know, we could, is that something we could put back to them for a further question, if that's really?
The answer to it, I think it's not something, it doesn't affect whether or not we teach it, because we're going to include it.
Right, and I'm fine, as long as we're including it. I mean, I just didn't want us not to include it, because we didn't get funding for it. That was my thing.
All right, thanks for that update, Dan. It was ready before.
Sure.
Any questions?
Yeah, if we can go back, there's one under the policy, Policy Review under C, the Ethics Ban. And this is just more, because I know this has come up before, and we received some emails.
Which policy are we on?
Ethics.
Two, 105.
Two, 105.
Two, 105. Under the definitions, the whole thing talks about like political activity, and it's pretty much pertaining to campaigns. However, under the definition of political activity, the first definition that comes out seems to even make it more vague, because it says preparing for organizing or participating in any political meeting, political rally, political demonstration, or other political event.
Which page are you on?
Page three.
Page three, yeah.
Page three.
Under definitions.
Political activity means.
Under Ethics Defin.
Number one. Definitions, number one.
Yeah, under definitions. I just think it makes it more vague, and I mean, because if you read the whole policy, it's talking about campaigning. And I personally would like to sort of think that we maybe should just take that out, because this doesn't really add anything. In my opinion, it doesn't add anything to the policy. It actually just makes it more vague, because anything that can be perceived as political in this climate, I mean, it has to be specific, because free speech can be considered political. I mean, any hot-button issue, people can just throw a label of political on it, and then that would sort of just ban it. And then I guess sort of what I'm going to is like, because I know we got some emails from some people, a lot of support, but then some people against, saying that about the Hauser, with the whole, the walkout at Hauser. I mean, that, in my opinion, was not political. That was their, I mean, that their right to free speech, but.
But those were students, not.
Those are students, right, but it's, people are still perceiving it as political. And I guess anything, any hot-button issue can be labeled as political, so I think we should just.
I think taking, so if you just look at the top of the policy, not the definition of what political activity means, to me, it's saying, no employee shall intentionally perform any political activity during compensated time.
Right.
So, then the definitions are just describing what political activity is and what compensated time is.
Right. And I'm just saying, political activity says they're saying political. They don't really define political. They just made it, because it pertains to campaigns.
Well, it has nine, I mean, 15 things what political activity means, right?
Well, I think David has a good point, though.
But they're calling them meetings and rallies.
When we think about the, our moments of silence, people, some people will consider that a political meeting or a political rally or a demonstration or something. There's no.
But that's not defined as a political activity according to this policy.
Well, see, I think it does, because one doesn't really describe it. One just makes it, under definition, it makes it more vague, in my opinion. I mean, because it doesn't define what a political meeting is, a political rally is, a political demonstration.
Is this, I think, are we in agreement that none of this pertains to students? Students can sort of do whatever they want?
This is all about employees.
Staff and the board, right?
Right, but the fact that the staff, like, let the students, we didn't.
They didn't engage.
They didn't engage, but.
No, I was going to say, some of these should become defined by case law, and then, you know, just sort of legal advice. So, for example, we talked about the whole student walkout, as those were emerging really across the country. There was a lot of legal guidance around staff uncompensated time, not engaging in political activity, or what could be considered political activity. So, I think some of that becomes an issue of interpretation, I think, which is what you're saying. So, you know, it's possible that it's a little bit, the wording is a bit vague here intentionally, because sometimes it's hard to anticipate, and you can anticipate elections and things like that. But there are other, like, that came up as a moment, right, for students, and there was sort of some clear legal advice around sort of the adults being, navigating that very carefully, what could be considered political activity.
Are you just thinking number one under political activity is vague?
Yeah, that's the only thing.
I was going to say, because to me, it's super not vague, because it's talking about circulating petitions, no.
Right, no. Two, two.
Getting signatures, you know, like, very political.
Right, two through 15. I have no issues with it. Number one is the one I think I have issues with.
I feel like it's so incredibly not vague.
Right, no, no. Number one, just number one.
Do you have a suggestion, then, in terms of what you think we should maybe consider? Like a specific, either just getting rid of that?
I just say, we just take rid of number one, and like, keep two through 15.
I would be very reluctant to be removing things from this, particularly without guidance from a law firm.
Yeah, I would, too.
If anything, we could expose ourselves, without any need to, we could expose ourselves to future lawsuits. I would be extremely reluctant to be, to start taking a scalpel to this. Not without a law professor by me.
Other opinions on this?
I agree with Dan.
I guess I don't find it vague. So I'm, like, I think, I don't think the situation that happened at Hauser was political for the employees.
No.
Was it?
Some, I think, people perceived it as political for the employees.
Some might perceive it that way.
But they specifically organized it to not be. Teachers continue to teach their class.
Or is it something that people would, you know, bring before a judge to say that the board got it wrong, or not the board, but the school district got it wrong? I'm not sure. I think that this policy, and the way it's worded, and the folks who are working on it on behalf are trying to insulate us from that.
I think the few extreme comments that we did receive are to be expected. I mean, I don't think that's out of the ordinary.
And it was very.
Yeah, so I'm fine with exactly how it is.
But we got comments on the other side.
Right, no.
You know, too. So it's hard to know.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if we were to change it, I would certainly want legal advice.
Certainly.
But I'm comfortable with, I mean.
Nothing good.
Well, it sounds like there's a sort of consensus to be bitten in.
I can defer to the consensus.
I mean, I can, too. I just wanted, I wanted to call that out, so.
I hear what you're saying.
I suppose I expand on my not good. But I think David has a good point, and a lot of things are subject to interpretation. But I can certainly defer to everybody else in terms of, maybe we just call everything a teachable moment and be done with it.
Any other comments about the policies, or?
It looks like we have a T-shirt for the week, and I'll maybe put that motto.
So then we, we talk these.
It's a T-shirt.
Yes, correct, okay. All right. So then, if there are no further, no further comments about the policies, then is there any public comment? If there's no further public comment, then the next committee of the whole meeting on July 4th is canceled. The next meeting is July 18th, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM at Hauser. The committee of the whole meeting on August 1st is canceled. And then we have an August 15th, regular business meeting at 7:00 PM. So if there is no further business, the meeting is adjourned.